Hey Matt.
Good evening. If you're waiting for our meeting to start, we're tuning in in the future. Thank you very much for joining Scottsville Town Council work session on November 9th, 2020. My name's Matt Lawless. I'm the Scottsville Town Administrator. The time here now is 6:49 PM. Our meeting starts at 7:00 and we're still assembling our quorum of town council members. So I'm going to cut off this video and microphone for the next 10 minutes. If you're watching in the future, just skip ahead on this recording 10 minutes and our meeting will start momentarily. Again, thank you very much. I'll see you shortly.
Hello.
Hey Thomas.
Jack, I just responded to your email. I'm sorry, I don't have that PDF you're looking for, but we'll see if Matt can get that to you.
I can't hear you with the background music.
Background mute? I don't have any music on.
Oh, I think it was Matt playing something. What were you saying?
I'm sorry, I don't have the PDF you were looking for.
I found it. It's from 2003. Is that the most accurate one?
Yeah, I don't think that those have been updated anytime soon.
Aye. Hi Donna.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
I'm doing very well. Yourself?
Pretty good.
Good to see you, Jack, or not see you, but see your name. Have a beautiful day. In the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Hey Eddie, this is Dan. How are you doing?
Yeah, doing very well. How about you?
Pretty good, pretty good. You had a good start to the week?
Um, just fighting the leaves.
Yeah. There's a lot of them out there. I have that same issue.
Yeah. I can make a pass and look behind me and it just falls as fast as I can get them.
Mr. Gritsko.
I've got a six.
Hey sir, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Three-year-old grandson who blew leaves today and just like you're saying Eddie, five minutes after we did it, it looked like no one had been there in weeks.
Oh yeah. I got, I got two, two blowers and a vacuum and I think by December 22nd, I'll be through.
You can always set them on a fire. We can come as far behind you.
Ah, well, yeah, I just throw the hose over the fence.
I like the background. This is Malushi.
Thank you very much.
Are you actually there? Is that like background?
I, I'm not actually there. It's too dark outside for me to be there right now.
It's good to see you, everybody.
Yeah, likewise. It's hard to believe it's the middle of November.
It was like 80 degrees yesterday. We're expecting um, the system from south, from Florida to hit us tomorrow night. And to Thursday, through Thursday, so expect heavy rain for that. So potentially maybe having the same issue we did before.
Right when my basement just dries out.
Is it gonna be?
Um, we, we've got a partial basement, so it's just like a cellar.
Sounds like it's time to put a sub pump in.
There's a, there's a drain. It works pretty well.
Anybody heard from Stuart?
No, sir.
I have not.
Alright, well, I'll give him one minute.
Hey Bron.
Yeah, where are you?
Alright, let's go ahead and start this meeting because we got, even though the agenda doesn't look that long, it's a lot of leads and some discussions that may last longer than we anticipate. So we'll just start right off the top with the chief of what we do report. Good evening, everybody. How are you this evening?
Good.
Doing well.
Good. Um, this month with calls for service were down a little bit. Exit patrols are pretty consistent. We assisted the county up a few less calls than last month and had no reportable or non-reportable accidents in the town that can come up with as far as statistics are concerned. Of course, you know how that is with my ability to manipulate the new world system and extrapolate data. So we only wrote 12 summonses last month, most of which were speeding, someone no licenses and expired inspections. So as far as that's concerned, anybody have any questions? If it's an N or a no, we'll move forward. Get a couple of things we need to address. We had a radar trailer, we've not seen it out recently because it's malfunctioned. The vehicle is a 1995 speed trailer and in talking with clear communications and customs, the only way to repair this would be to take it either to custom and let them troubleshoot it themselves. They would have to find another trailer and take parts off of it because a lot of the parts that are already in this trailer, they don't make it. But I'm, I'm gonna do a little bit more research on it, but I think our speed trailer is done. So we're probably gonna have to lock that, wash that into the system. Which eventually will push me by another digital side. Probably just gonna have to be determined when we get that from. We just had, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, we had some vehicle issues. One of our vehicles is totaled as a result of the avoiding a deer strike. One of them related to a knife sometime. Unfortunately, in the effort to avoid deer, the right front tire got off of the gravel port, not gravel portion, but the blacktop into the ditch in that particular area where this incident occurred. It just had some maintenance done to it by V-Dot. Cleaned the ditch out and once he got off, it just pulled him down into it. Fortunately, Officer Taylor's not hurt. He's sitting with you as well as today. And the way the video system is set up, we were able to capture that. Unfortunately, the, well, I say unfortunately, fortunately the deer wasn't struck by him. But there were several deer in the area where he was at the time of this incident. So that puts him in the used therapy of an insurance fee. I think Matt is already in a settlement process with the insurance company for that. That was totaled early on. That particular night, not that night, but Sunday night, being the town to talk to Tony about his accident, on my way home, I struck a branch that fell in the middle of the tree. Come on Jim. And that did about $4,000 of damage to my car.
Oh.
It was about 15 feet tall, fell about 10 to 12 feet, maybe 15 feet in front of me at the time. And when I struck it, it did a little damage to the hood. Major damage was done on the roof, from the top of the branch striking the back of the windshield and up the back of the windshield, the back of the roof, near the windshield. That is the most severe damage that we have related to that. From the conversation with the body shop, really only necessary repairs we would need for that would be to maybe straighten the metal out a little bit and seal the antenna where that particular strike hurt. They say we really should replace the roof, but as far as structural conditions are concerned, it's not really not necessary to do that provided that we're able to seal it. So we'll, we'll make a final determination on what that is, but I think Matt's also in the process of getting a settlement back. The third thing we need to discuss is the truck. We've had a couple of meetings with the mayor, Matt Lawless, and one of our auxiliaries. Currently, he currently owns a vehicle that he purchased from Clear Communications that was used as a demo police vehicle at conferences that Clear Communications, I say Clear Communications, actually it's, what's the name of that place called? East, East Coast Emergency Equipment and Regular Vehicles. They're stationary based out of Palmyra at the moment. They have a second office. I'm not sure where it is. Anyways, they use it as a demo. He purchased, purchased the vehicle equipped with a radar, lights, siren. I think it's got a computer mount in it. And a prisoner transport assembly, which involves a plastic seat to put the prisoner in for transports, no matter where you go. It is my idea or my intention to try and replace the truck with that vehicle because the truck is not police rated. The current truck that the town has for, for maintenance, though is operational, I think is due to be replaced, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong on that. It's got a lot of miles on it. It's wore out. And I don't know how many more years you'll get out of it. With the truck, we're at like 46,000 or 48,000 miles, this truck would give you easily another 10 years of service. Which is why I'd like to, like you to entertain the idea of purchasing this charger to replace that truck. Because it then gives us some other police rated vehicle. It is a 2000, 2016 Dodge Charger. It's got 49,000 miles on it. It's a ProBar Transport System, which is a plastic seat. It makes it very easy to clean and decontaminate should a prisoner have vomited inside of the car. Which has happened to me on a few occasions in my previous jobs. And made it very difficult and costly, but practically to disinfect and sanitize. The Golden Eagle Radar 2 that comes with it is actually a more up-to-date radar unit than the radar unit in my vehicle and the truck. The asking price that I wrote down from the auxiliary officer was $22,500. And that recalls $25,000. Either way, a vehicle that year with the equipment that's in it would be more expensive to purchase than that price. And again, if you replace the vehicle with the truck, which is really not a vehicle I would consider to be for optimal use as a police vehicle in the town. The roads are just too small. It makes it difficult for the driver to turn around on vehicles when he's looking to go for a violation. It's not pursuit rated, so it's against policy for him to try and pursue any vehicle at this stage. Not that we do many vehicle pursuits to start with. But either way, it's just a better, well-equipped vehicle and more apt and functional for our law enforcement agency. So that's what I'm asking to be considered related to that issue. You all have any comments on that? If you would, if you would give us that.
Yeah, Jeff, I'd like, I'd like to speak to that if I could. Number one, I'm glad that no one was hurt in either accident. We're seeing how fragile our vehicles are. We've got, well, you're still using one, but the other one is totally out of commission. We are used to getting used vehicles because we just can't afford new ones. I, I think it would be a good idea personally, open to discussion, to have the police vehicle turned into a maintenance vehicle, the other maintenance vehicle in town retired. And whether it's $25,000 or $22,500, the the cost of getting a vehicle without equipment on it, you can't do it for that amount of money. So I mean, it's a good deal. That's what I'm trying to say. And you, you seem to be happy with it and you've explored it and we talked about it in the Public Safety Committee last Monday. And like I said, you, you, you just can't, you know, replace a vehicle. The vehicle you're talking about would probably be $45,000 easy. And then one thing different is, it's used.
Jeff, could you just explain, so I have a sense of it, like I think, do we, do we have three police cars? One unmarked, two with like the Scottsville logo on it, plus the truck? Is that what we currently have? When they're fully operational, that is.
So prior to this accident, we had five total. The fifth vehicle was actually gonna be the spare vehicle in the event we had an occurrence like this. So it's serving its purpose. The truck, the vehicle that was acquired from Almarone County PD has now become the regular vehicle that Officer Taylor drives as a result of the totaling of the other vehicle. That was set up so that in the event we had a serious maintenance issue or where a vehicle was down as a relation, as it related to service, we had something for that officer. Prior to that, if an event like this occurred, it required us to bring that truck into town, have it parked here. And then the officers had to drive their personal vehicles in to drive that particular vehicle. Part of the issue with that is that the equipment that they carry is pointless. And to move it in and out of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Every day is time consuming. So, well, I'd say time consuming and conditionally. So that was the purpose of getting that fifth vehicle. But as it stands right now, it's the truck that's marked, two explorers, like we used to have marked, one of which now has 121,000 miles on it. The other one has, I think between 88,000 and 90,000. And then of course, the unmarked car.
Okay. And I, and I am asking just because, you know, I want to wait until the insurance comes through so we sort of have a sense of prices right across the board. But also so that we know, because I know we were planning to get our, our vehicles updated, sort of like what we need to run our force, our law enforcement operations. And so it might be helpful to have like a, a list of, you know, what we need first sort of thing. Because if our budget, things are tight. And so I just, I just think that would be helpful for my decision-making. Sort of see like the total cost of all these different things and like what's the absolute minimum we need to make sure that you guys have what you need to do. And then for each of the vehicles, sort of a write-up of where they fit into your, your operations. I think that would help me understand what we're looking at.
And then Jack, I might add that by using the truck as a patrol vehicle, number one is, it's not really certified to be a patrol vehicle, number one. And if there was an apprehension, the person that was apprehended would be sharing the front seat with their officer. That would not be safe.
Yeah, no, that does, that sounds a little cozy.
Yeah, it is cozy.
Okay, so I'll try to prepare that for you. I may get back with you on that, Zach, if you don't mind. Just be more specific on what you want, so I'll give you what you're looking for. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, I just think, you know, I think Matt might be able to provide the numbers in terms of cost, but just so I can see, it might be helpful for everybody just to see sort of like what you absolutely need and then sort of, you know, from there.
That's a good point.
Essential versus like what is nice to have additionally.
Yeah, just expand on this. This is helpful just in terms of including, you know, general maintenance costs. The more expensive maintenance costs, which I think occur a lot quicker with a police vehicle, just because you are driving it constantly. You know, gas mileage, those kinds of things would be really helpful. The one thing that I wanted to add to the conversation is I do think it's important for the town to keep a truck in its inventory of vehicles. And it makes sense that maybe under police ownership and everyday use may not make the most sense, but just in terms of transporting barricades, things for events, you know, large banners of that kind of thing, towing. We do live in a rural location. So to have that higher clearance and that usability by the town is something that I'm interested in sort of keeping within the fleet that the town operates and maintains.
If I could add, the truck we currently have in the police department was purchased under the USDA loan program. And it was purchased for the police department. So we would have to pay off the remaining, I believe it's about $2,600 of that loan before we could retire it from the police department. That was, I think roughly a $9,000 loan originally for the truck. And they granted us the rest of that.
Thanks, Thomas.
Hey, I have an idea. What about making it a, as a, with a snowplow in the snow, so you can do like your, like parking lots easier with, with having the maintenance team do it?
No, that's part of vehicles. Was anybody having other questions related to that vehicles?
No.
So there is, we already talked about the speed. We did have a, a meeting related to some of the recent legislative I guess laws signed by the government, one of which is relates to having a civilian review board related to law enforcement use of force. The law, as it's written, so we may, doesn't require us to put a civilian review board in place. Not that we have a lot of use of force issues in the town, quite frankly. So at this stage, I'm really not too concerned about establishing one, but if we need to, as part of the discussion with the Public Safety Committee, it was thought that maybe we would use the members that are currently participating with that committee. One of the requirements, however, in that law is that there shouldn't be any law enforcement officers on the committee other than an advisory, in an advisory capacity. on the committee other than an advisory, in an advisory capacity. I can share my opinion of whether I agree or not, but that's neither here nor there in the law of the law. But at this stage of the game, we haven't had to use them. We've only had two use of forces in the last two years. And, uh, those I found reviewed, we found them to be lawful, necessary, uh, and reasonable as it related to that. The necessity for it. But that is something that we'll, we'll be working on in the future. There are other laws that have come out, but I just haven't examined well enough at this point to tell you what kind of, um, cost it's going to be towards the police department or the town. But I'll get more into that as I do more research on things. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff, um, you're, you were referring to the, the House Bill fifty fifty-five and that's, um, uh, an option for localities. It's not mandated by the government, uh, either locally or states. So, and number two is, is a civilian, uh, review board, like you said. I don't recall, you know, in my tenure, where we've needed a civilian review board. I believe the public safety committee, if there were a need, could, you know, take on those duties. But, uh, I just want to reiterate that it's not mandated by the state. It is an option for locality.
Yeah, um, Eddie, uh, when I met with the chief this morning, we, uh, talked about this and we sort of came to the conclusion that let's, let's think about it. Let's think the pros and cons of it. Essentially, we don't have to do it like now. We're not mandated to do it. Let's, uh, let's just kind of be thinking about how we would do it if we had to.
Exactly.
One follow-up question about that, just about the structure of it. Is this a standing, uh, review board that meets regularly? Or is it sort of like our Board of Zoning Appeals that would meet as necessary?
Well, let me not, let me say this. I'm not familiar with it enough to make that determination for you at this stage. Uh, I had it printed out and somehow or another I've misplaced. But again, it's only indicates that localities may, you know, it's not, it's not shared.
Right.
But they do have very specific guidelines as to who can be on that committee.
Okay.
Zach, often, uh, as is the case with our BZA, they, if, if it is mandated that it be created by the state, there's a minimum meeting requirement. So the BZA will meet on a quarterly basis, even if they don't have any, any business to attend to, just to fulfill that requirement.
Got it. Thank you.
So the last thing I'd like to speak with you all about is the CARES Act. Several months ago, I may be telling you incorrectly, the Charlotteville County, the city of Charlotteville, Alamo County, um, provided bonuses to necessary employees who had to work during the COVID event. And the, uh, date range they used was March sixteenth through May of fifteen. And then in the article that Thomas was kind enough to find for me, it says, "In the city's sworn public safety officers in fire and police departments and sheriff's offices were paid twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Administrative staff and sheriff's office and fire and police departments received seven hundred and fifty." I'd like for the town council to consider our police officers that relates to some of that funding that we're receiving from Alamo County as a bonus, uh, for the requirement to work during that time period. They don't typically take off sick. They're on time and punctual every day. And I'd like to see them at least recognized for that willingness to come out here and put themselves in harm's way as it related to the public health emergency. They do do it every day, uh, just by wearing a badge and wearing a gun and forcing the law. I kind of want to see them get some type of a accolade as it relates to that. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think perhaps on that, if Eddie, being the head of the public safety committee, if he could, uh, gather some figures to present. Maybe the chief can gather some figures, uh, between chief and Matt and Thomas, uh, and then make a presentation to the council on that matter.
Yeah, I'd be glad to meet with them, uh, anytime, um, to discuss this.
Chief?
Yes.
Uh, this, this is Dan. First of all, I want to thank you and the officers for all that you do. I know it's been a very challenging national climate for police for a while. And I thank you for how you all have nobly served us in this area. And I'm sorry to hear about the car issues that you all have had. And I wish that they hadn't happened, but at the same time, glad that you all are okay. And I do think that is a good idea for Eddie to follow up and see, and our mayor has also chimed in on that for ways to see if we can apply some of that funding. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And please make sure that the officers know that we are so, I mean, all of us are very thankful for all that you all, you all do.
Thank you very much. And it's done that you shared that with me. I'll make sure to share with Tom.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, we couldn't be here without you.
I just want to raise, um, a notification in regards to this suggestion for CARES Act bonus funds. It does fit within the guidelines. I'm reviewing them right now from the state. But we do have to expend those funds by December. So just for town council to realize that we're waiting for recommendations to review. The, the timeline is moving rather quickly. So as we, we hit this item a little later on the agenda, please keep that in mind that we do need to spend the money by December.
Good point.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you so much, chief. Thank y'all very much. Have a good day.
How are you?
Have a good night.
Thanks, as always.
I'll make the chamber a comment or support really quick. Uh, Linda LaFontaine has been very, uh, trustworthy and true with getting the Scottsville happenings distributed to everybody on the email list. So that's about all the chamber has been able to be, uh, to do recently. Mr. Bullet, ARB.
Yep. What do we got here? Um, yes, ARB. Uh, what are we doing this month? We're having a special session. That doesn't happen often, so it's cool. In our special session this month, we're going to be discussing design guidelines for fencing, design guidelines for fencing. Um, we have design guidelines for all sorts of things in town. Uh, but the section on fencing in our current guidelines is very small. It's only a paragraph long. And there have been more fences that have gone up in town over the last six months. Uh, some of which have followed the appropriate procedure for getting a certificate of appropriateness for anything over three and a half feet. Some have not. And so we are going to be retroactively looking at two, uh, fence, fences that have gone up previously. One of which is on the docket now. Uh, but in order to respond to them, uh, we have decided to do some research into other localities. To see how they do fences. So on Thursday, the nineteenth, we plan on getting together to come up with guidelines that will then add to our own existing ones, so that we have some clearer language about guidance or guidelines rather for working through fences in particular. And also I want to say about that. Oh yeah. So just also to have a heads up, one of these, since the COAs were, were, um, are being addressed retroactively. The ARB can ask for substantial alterations to the work that has been done if it does not find it to be appropriate based on our guidelines. So, um, so where is that? So how does counsel fit into that? So a property owner in that event could say, okay, well, I'll go and do the work you told me to do. Thank you, ARB, for your, for your wisdom and guidance. They could also say, I don't like this at all. And then that puts counsel in the seat of the ARB, um, to then adjudicate the decision. So that's just a heads up that you might be the ARB. I hope not, but you might be. So that's just how it goes. But I'm very pleased that, uh, the ARB is coming together around this particular issue and I think bring a lot of expertise. And, um, and so I, I think we're going to have a good product for the town in terms of talking about this. But I do want to just reiterate the, the, the importance of people following the order of operations for historic properties in this town. Because when people follow the order of events, it goes really well. Like it's collaborative, the ARB is helpful, property owners are thankful, and, and we get a good product at the end. Where we get conflict and consternation is when people don't follow the order of operations and we find out, and then we go back to do our job. So just, we are going to be hopefully sharing out, um, another mailer, um, as we did last year, which has been one of the things we've done to increase communication about what the ARB does, although you live in historic overlay district. But it's also just an important thing to have in the ether about how we operate as a town. And since you, we're all town representatives here, it's important for us to all just know that and communicate that sort of thing with people as they come up. You don't have to like, you know, cuss people on the street and be like, did you know we have an ARB? But, you know, it just helps, just helps that we're all aware of the process, um, so that we generate a culture of, of preservation and knowledge of how this town works. The Canal Basin Warehouse, uh, has been the victim of vandalism recently. The windows have been, uh, knocked out with rocks at least twice. And so the neighbors brothers who have been trying to get momentum on that project are kind of facing hardship. We also hope at this special meeting to, we don't have to approve temporary lighting and signs. But we are going to in this instance, because since it is a construction site, um, with no set deadline, the floodlights that they plan to install as well as some signage about security, uh, we are going to approve just so that we have some record as a town about how we've adorned the building while it's under construction. So I think there are some things we need to attend to in terms of appearance and how light is thrown on the building and around for residents and, and whatnot. But, um, it's unfortunate, um, but I'm pleased that the, the neighbors brothers have taken some proactive steps around lighting, security and signs to help mitigate. Our police department has been notified and have assured the neighbors brothers increased patrols in that area, even if it's just driving a car through occasionally. So that's just an FYI there. Um, I met the new, or I, I, we, the ARB, met the new, um, owner of the Mason, Masonic Lodge down on the corner here that is now transferred to new ownership. And they're going to be starting some, some work there, replacing windows, I think is where they're going to start. But I'm, I'm pleased to have a, a new tenant and to meet them who's, who's interested in doing some work down there on that building. Uh, what else? Yeah. And the last thing, last two sort of informational items, we're still moving forward with the certified local government application for our, um, for our ARBs that we can get involved in that program. And we will probably be doing the historic inventory now in January, since we've gotten some other things dropped in our last recently that are going to take some, some attentiveness. So that's where we are. But as always, I'm, I'm open for questions from all of you.
Actually have a question. Um, I'm not, I've heard several different versions of what, um, what sort of, for lack of a word, would a power the ARB has? So George used to tell us that the ARB is an advisory board and that, you know, we, that, that people could uh, ask for assistance and recommendations. And, you know, if they wanted to paint, they didn't decide they didn't like that. And they wanted to paint their house pink polka dots, they could go ahead and do that. I don't, but on the other hand, if people say that, you know, you, you have to go, you saying that we need to go through the system and what? Can you clarify what exactly how this works?
Yeah. So the ordinance states that any substantial alteration to a building or new construction has to go through the ARB. That includes fences, in this case over three and a half feet. If you are replacing, uh, something just as it is, so your door was painted white and you're painting it white, you're good. You don't need a certificate of appropriateness. But anything, so, so things that might come up include windows, roofing, you know, things that require substantial alterations potentially to the building require a COA. And I would recommend just getting one anyway. Even if it's just painting my house the same color, I think the best order of operations would be to check in with the town and say, hello, this is what I'd like to do. Matt's got the ordinance. And if it's a clear thing that needs a COA, he'll, he'll get you in the pipeline for it. And if not, it's a good consultation just to check in about what needs to be done and, and what you do or do not need consultation with the ARB for. Signs are the same way, any permanent hanging sign outside, changes in lighting, these sorts of things. So anyway, so that, so that's my, so what I would recommend is if you own a historic property and you're doing work to the exterior of your home, right? We don't care what's happening on the inside. We don't care about landscaping, uh, unless it's a new build or there are significant changes to grade. If there's significant changes to grade, we're interested, but really when we're talking about the building itself. And things added to the property, like the gazebo that we approved that are at our last meeting, right? To change the historic character or nature of the property. And so when in doubt, ask. That's what I see. But, you know, those are the sorts of things that do require COAs.
As Zach pointed out, the ARB's advisory, if some, because somebody has a right to appeal any decision for, uh, to the council. And at that point, the council make renders its decision. I think if that doesn't occur, then the ARB's decision is binding.
Right.
I believe to address Stuart's, uh, question though, if you look at the zoning ordinance that establishes the ARB, it will read, it's an advisory committee. It's not, doesn't have any power.
Well, it does have power if you don't appeal. It's, it's provisions are enforceable too.
Like the fence ordinance, you can read it any way you want to.
Well, I disagree. I mean, I think that, uh, that ARB regulations are enforceable, uh, under the code of Virginia. If you, if you ignore them and don't, and don't exercise your appeal rights, um, the, the, I mean, the ordinance has some clarity. As we, as we discussed, as I discussed with the ARB and Zach a couple of weeks ago and, and Matthew.
I mean, the ARB, the, the ordinance is clear about what requires a COA, you know? A fence over three and a half feet requires a COA.
Establishment of the ARB ordinance. And read it. And it will say that it's an advisory group.
Sure. The, the zoning administrator has enforcement power of the ordinance and town council makes the final decision on the advisory. So the, the police power behind the ARB comes from other sources.
The ARB does not have police power.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. And we are an advisory body. I mean, we have designed, we have the ordinance, the, what is required, what requires a COA. But most of our work is in an environment, in an advisory capacity so that a property owner can figure out what design concept will then receive a certificate of appropriateness. So it's sort of those twin, those twin things are happening.
Okay. Well, let's move on. Uh, since you don't have a representative on the planning commission, I'll ask Matt.
Actually, one more question. When is the, when is the ARB meeting that's going to be discussing fences? Is that the nineteenth?
Yeah, I think so. Let me look.
Okay. And, yeah.
Zach, I also have a question. Um, this came up from a community member just this week. They're looking at property that's in historic districts, but there's not a historic structure. So where does that fall in terms of the appropriate process?
So are they building?
The, the possibility, yes.
Yes, they get a COA for, for the design for the building.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Which is what, yeah, which is what we did on Poplar Spring, I don't know, this summer. So.
Okay. Great. Thanks so much.
One other question. So, uh, it's good, very good to hear that the neighbors brothers are still, you know, thinking about the, about the warehouse. Is there anything that we as the town can do to help them, encourage them, assist them in that process? Cause I think that's, that's a structure that is incredibly valuable to the town. And I just hate to see it sort of slowly disintegrate away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disagree with the question. I don't know. We've met with them a few times. I mean, like they're dedicated to the process. They're slow because they're like trying to do it right. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Might be worth us asking.
Yeah, I, I think if you could do that, if you have an opportunity to do that, um, that would be great. Well, I always try to track them down whenever I see something suspicious going on in one of their houses. Stuart, just so. We're here to help them, but I, I just don't see them very often.
Just, just so I say this, I've been on the town council now for 10 years. We were having the same conversations with them 10 years ago.
Yeah.
So, so I, I will just say, not that we can't light a fire or try to help them, but to, in their, to their credit, they're working on it, but the pace that they're working on it, I'm not sure is a pace that has any end date to it. So, so, and I, and I will just say again, I, I think it's totally fine and we definitely want to protect the property. But, uh, I don't know, maybe our supervisor has some ideas, a supervisor. Do you have any ideas on funding or ways that we could supplement what they're doing there? Supervisor, do you have any ideas on funding or ways that we could supplement what they're doing there? Or any thoughts?
I don't really have any thoughts on supplemental funding at this point, but that actually was a topic I was going to bring up. We are getting ready to go into our budget cycle, CIP plan. And so I would definitely recommend that you, you try to reach out to county staff. Community development to see if they have any advice and, and also to our budget and finance people. I know that as with you, everything is very much sort of up in the air as we're waiting to see. What's going to happen, the recent uptick in the COVID-19 infections in our area. It thus far has been somewhat slight, but the trend nationwide is increasing, which just raises additional, you know. Uncertainties as to where the thing may be. If you've got CARES money. Again, our budget people might be able to help you in terms of whether that's something that, that could be used.
Thank you, that, that's helpful. It may be a long-term strategy related to that particular property and finding ways to. Have it be something that we think creatively beyond what we've done. My point in saying that it's been 10 years and we were having the same conversation is. It's been 10 years and we're having the same conversation.
Yeah. And just, just so you know, Supervisor Price, this is a, it's a building that was built before the civil war, survived. You know, the raid of the town, has been a community center in the past. And the neighbors brothers who own it are doing, I mean, they're literally building each frame, each window frame piece by piece. Because making their own equipment to do that, because you can't buy those things anymore. So it's a, it's a labor of love and it's going to be, the work that they've done has been spectacular. It's really been beautiful work. And we're just trying to figure out, I, I guess my point is it's real historical gymnast for saving for this, for the, the county as well. If we can, you know, can get some help with it.
Zach, just real quick, excuse me, there is preservation Piedmont, so if you both can look into that. They do help with funding opportunities for structures such as this.
Preservation.
All right, let's move on to planning commission and I'm going to ask Matt to get on that meeting.
I can defer to Councilor Payne, who is filling in as the council liaison.
My first trip to the planning commission as liaison from town council. We met last Monday night by way of Zoom and in person. In the public session, we had one visitor who came in and from the greater Scottsville area. And she just wanted to express her feelings that. If the present or future owners of the old tower plant ever decided to convert to apartments there. She would like for the town of Scottsville to, to work with whoever owns the property. And whoever may develop it into an apartment to make it pet friendly. And. So that was the only public comment we had. We are also on the agenda was the application. For the ARB and B. At 305 Valley Street. We had the applicant there, he made a presentation. And basically he has two very successful other locations. His concerns were. Parking on this, the front of the property as opposed to parking in the rear. And maybe a possible walkway to the entrance. All in a tendency, you know, expressed their excitement about the new business. And the special use permit was voted on. And the planning commission voted four to nothing, four zero, to forward this to town council for consideration. The next thing on the agenda was the proposed Tiger Fuel facility. Expressly, the car wash and drive-through at 153 James River Road. And. The following things were, were expressed by both the public and the, the commission. Hours of operations, security, noise, traffic. Maybe. People congregating there after hours. At the end of the, the session, it seems like the owners of Tiger Fuel. Had answered all of the questions to the satisfaction of the planning commission. And so the special use permit for the 24-hour. Car wash and. The drive-through. Were passed four zero. And we recommend it be forwarded to council for further consideration. The last thing on the agenda was the West Downtown Development Plan. And that also passed four to zero to be forwarded to council. Thank you. Oh, by the way. We're taking some time off, the next meeting is February. We will not be meeting in December, January unless needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie, appreciate you stepping in and taking that position. Treasure.
I'm sure I treasure is the fourth, for those tuning in, I'm Matt Wallace, town administrator. Supervisor Price mentioned a little bit of connection between the, the local government budgets and the wider economy and pandemic. Could I, could I ask for some further thoughts on that? What else is happening at the county budget level that may affect us here in town?
And I don't know right now. We're scheduled to start having our budget meetings in the next couple of weeks. I just got a notice from our budget and finance office giving us information on kind of the range. Right before Thanksgiving that they're going to schedule some meetings. So at this point, I don't have a lot more information. You do, because they, they haven't presented us to it. We will be talking about the overall budget as well as the CIP program. And that was one of the things I was going to bring up. You know, sort of in a review. This evening. To, to just, you know, mention to town council, it's a good time to get information to me and our budget people. So at least we've got, you know, what, what are important things that y'all may be interested in? And we can look to see what the county resources may be. So far, I would say the initial indications have been that our property tax revenues seem to be very consistent. I think somewhat surprising, but around the country, property values seem to be holding very well. It's the sales tax and, you know, hotel rental taxes, things like that. Where we're starting to see a substantial reduction this year over previous years. And candidly, it, it's hard to say whether that's going to get better. I know there was good news today that at least one of the manufacturers of the vaccine. Had, I think, a 93% success rate, but a very small test pool that they were looking at. And that's really important because we do have some things coming up. And actually, in regard to, it's a bit of a budget issue. On November 18th, at our next board meeting, we will be considering our emergency ordinance. It does expire at midnight that night, so we'll be back before on the board of supervisors. I will tell you a few of the things that we have on our minds, and again, I was going to bring this up so that I could get input from y'all. UVA students will be leaving, departing earlier this year than they typically do. And then coming back until later than they typically would. So essentially what we're going to be looking at is December and January with the reduction. Of the student population in the area, a little before December and a little after January. That raises several things, one of which is restaurants. It's going to be a reduced pool of potential customers. And so that I think could give us a window of opportunity to look to try and expand the capacity in restaurants. And so it's something that we're starting informally to, to discuss. Because by, if, if we can't expand the capacity in the restaurants. Then that provides an opportunity, albeit with a smaller pool of customers. For the restaurants possibly to survive through the winter. They've done a little better in the fall because customers were able to eat outdoors. But as the weather gets colder, as we expect, you know, coldest three months of the year coming up. If it's possible to expand their capacity indoors while still maintaining social distance. And that's something that I believe we will be talking about on the 18th of November. So I would really like to hear from the town council, your thoughts on that. On the other side of it, of course, is we're heading into flu season. December through February is the peak season. There's a lot of concern that this winter may be much worse with the virus and the absence of an effective and available vaccine. Because whereas last year, the virus really didn't even hit our shores until late February, beginning of March. Now we have what, 10 million, 11 million cases in the country, we're over 120,000 a day. Hospitals are starting to reach their capacity again. So there's a very delicate balance that we're looking at. And I think that it's very possible that the board may vote one way initially. But if the data comes out. That's either better or worse, then the board may very, very likely. On very short order, have to go back in and make modifications, particularly if things get worse. So that's something I really would, I really do want to hear from the town council. What impact would it have on your restaurants? We still would have to maintain social distancing, but perhaps we could raise the capacity limit above 50%. Of the fire marshal, you know, fire code limits. The other thing I was going to mention is, and it's a little off of the budget, but I did leave with the mayor and town administrator. When I came to town last week, after our board meeting and we walked up to the Van Cleve Nature Center. A list of openings, current openings on the county's CACs, community advisory committees. Some of them are district specific. For example, Fifth and Avon, I recognize that's up near the northern part of the district. But people in Scottsville heading into Charlottesville very likely are heading up 20, maybe branching off at, at Avon. And I'm, I really like to see if some people from the town of Scottsville would be interested in serving on that particular CAC. But also it was a list of all of the CACs because some of them are not district specific. There may be residents who could really contribute on some of these other CACs. And then again, our next board meeting is the 18th of November, and I am planning on coming down on the 19th. And continuing the meetings with the mayor, the town administrator, any other town councils who would like to participate. We've talked about going down to the levee and checking out the pumps as well as other things. And, and literally the idea is that every other week. After board meetings, I can come give a debrief to members of town council, the mayor, the town administration that are interested. And each time, take us a, a, a walk through a different part of town. Which will allow me to be better informed as I go back to the, to the board of supervisors. And then the last thing, we are in the early stages of trying to prepare virtual town halls for the different supervisors. I don't have the details on the date, time, or, or anything, obviously it will be virtual. But keep your, you know, eyes and ears open for more information on that. That kind of concludes my, the, the outline of events I'd planned on discussing. I'm open to any questions, and I appreciate y'all giving me this opportunity to speak.
I was just going to say, this is Dan again, to say thank you to you, our former mayor, our current mayor, our vice mayor. And just everybody for that wonderful meeting that we had. I think it was great to have the opportunity. And I just know we said that several times, but I think we can't overstate how helpful it was. How much we want them to know that we're working together with them. We obviously all have different ideas, but it's very much a wonderful memory that we have. And we're looking forward to other ways to collaborate.
Councilor Gritsko, thank you so much for that. And I have to tell you, you won a lot of hearts and minds in that meeting. It was such good collaboration. It, it's so hard to believe that that hadn't happened in at least 25 years. I think we're all very confident it will now be an annual event that we can all look forward to. You know, could possibly be, but at least on an annual basis. And I just see a real increase in cooperation and collaboration between the town and the county.
Supervisor Price, one request. Because there's so many CACs that you feel like sort of impact the town, and we may not be able to help fill those vacancies very quickly. Any suggestions that you have in terms of putting us in, in touch with the chair? Or projects that are being presented to those CACs that impact the town? Maybe we can bridge that gap by having those staff members or those chairs be in touch to help with the communication.
You know, and that's an easy, that's an easy thing to do.
Great.
I, I would, I would, you've got the list, I, I gave that to the mayor, although that's a partial list, that shows where the vacancies are. But if I might offer a suggestion is to go to the county website, look at the list of them. Pick the ones that you would like to hear from, and then let me know where the clerks are. What we can do is arrange to have them do a presentation for your town council meetings.
That would be great.
Yeah, you could do it every month, every, you know, twice a month, whatever, whatever looked like would fit within your schedule.
Okay, excellent.
You know what you need much better than anyone else does. I remember before going on a mission trip to Africa, reading the book, you know, when helping hurts. When people come in and say, I know what you need, when you know what you need.
Yeah.
But thank you, I appreciate that.
Certainly, yeah, we definitely would appreciate that, that's great, thank you.
Supervisor Price, I just wanted to mention that I was up at the Mud House in Croze last weekend, two weekends ago. And they were very, they were pretty full, but they were, they were very strict about wearing your masks. To the point where if you weren't sipping coffee, you need to have your mask on, and they'd come over and tell you that. And I think if we could get to a point where we could enforce, you know, the, the, you know, mask wearing and the, and the other safety precautions. That, you know, we have within restaurants, then I, then I would, I think that would be, I would be comfortable with increasing the occupancy. I think it's just, but the two need to go hand in hand is we can't just kind of increase occupancy and, you know. Ignore the precautions that we, that, that are necessary to make it safe. And, and I'd love to see occupancy increase here in Scottsville because we are so reliant on our restaurants and, and, you know, we're going to keep them alive. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we do it in a way that's safer.
And, and I, Councilor Munson, I really appreciate that because I will tell you that that is my big concern really is the safety. And one of the other things, I know that the schools have done it. I don't know that restaurants have had the financial resources or the ability to do it. But the schools have expended hundreds of thousands of dollars improving the ventilation system, better filters and things. And a lot of the studies I've seen have shown that the air handling systems have contributed to spreading of the, the virus. In those closed situations in particular restaurants. So, you know, I, I totally agree with you. It's not simply can we expand above capacity with social distancing? But it requires, you know, the, the safe practices of the masks and where, where. And I really think we have to look at the ventilation systems. We all know that indoors is much more dangerous than outdoors, so I really appreciate that comment.
And one last thought in terms of the restaurants, I'm a big fan of if the longer we can keep folks outside eating with their coats and hats, the better. And so if there is an opportunity to look at funding and grants for outdoor heaters for those that don't have them, to provide that option. You know, like for us, one heater would serve an entire restaurant versus in Charlottesville, they might need, you know, 10 to serve their clientele. So it's just something to think about as you're having discussions too.
Right, and again, that CARES money, I think that's something, I, I mean, I'm not the financial person. I cannot give you that legal financial advice, but I would think that that would exactly be what that money would be used for. It's clearly tied to the pandemic.
You know, I can't really see the difference between an outdoor enclosed heated area and an indoor. Enclosed heated area.
No, I agree, I think it just expands capacity. If, if instead of having it just the indoor. If, if instead of having just the indoor, or even with social distancing, you may only be able to put 20 people, if you can then expand it to an outdoor area, that allows the restaurant to be able to serve 30, maybe 40 people. So I think it's just the space expansion that it provides.
Yeah, I understand that.
And Mr. Payne, I was sort of hardcore, I wasn't thinking covered outdoor at all. So, you know, I was coming from the camping mindset where you truly enjoy the stars outdoor, it was a little bit.
You need a heated plate under your food.
If I go to the Shandore Mountains, I'm gonna have a TV and a satellite in my tent.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? Okay, well, thank you Supervisor Price for joining us, and thank you for the information that you imparted to us.
Thank you so much.
Is as follows, I did attend the ARB meeting this past week. I have some thoughts on where I used to live and their ARB policy on fencing, which I'll pass on to Zach before too long, before his meeting on the 19th. And as Supervisor Price said, we met last Thursday and had a nice walk through Van Cleve and just a lovely fall afternoon. That was, that was good. We talked about a lot of things that she has already mentioned in her report. Former Mayor Gill asked me to help out with the collection of the water testing bottles and that project, and I came down for about an hour the other morning, but they already had enough volunteers, so I just kind of stood around and didn't do a whole lot of anything, but I was here. I met with the chief on this new police car that we were looking at, and it is, personally, I think it would be a really good investment. It's low mileage, it's new, got all the bells and whistles. And Matt and I are exploring ways that we could finance this thing. I guess the highlight of the past couple of weeks was Senator Warner had a rally in Charlottesville on the 31st, I guess it was. I went up to that, it was an outdoor thing. It's a line of people voting on the last day of early voting, it was about two hours. He had come from Lynchburg, he said it was a three hour wait there. But the main thing is, I got to meet him, chat for a few minutes, give him my card. And he has some friends that live in the Scottsville area, so he knows where Scottsville is. And I explained that we had changed our charter so that I have a four-year term, and I would be calling on him from time to time. So I made that connection with Senator Warner. And then the chief, I met with the chief this morning, and he walked me through the e-ticket process on the computer, which is quite fascinating. And we talked about the CARES bonus, possible CARES bonus money for the police officers who work diligently during the earlier part of this year. So that was my report. Any questions? Okay, let's go to Mr. Bowling. Mr. Bowling?
I just, I had to unmute myself. I've been, I worked help Matt with the CARES contracts. Matt, did we make the changes on the general liability insurance paragraph?
We have, we have a presentation from those folks later on this agenda. I have not seen their insurance policy yet, but I appreciate your note that our contract partners do need to carry proper checks.
Right, just as long as they have something, that's a big help. Not that anybody's going to get in any trouble, but the huge benefit of that is it gives you a lawyer to defend. And, and that, that, one thing the town doesn't want to do is become engrossed in any sort of dispute, which it really didn't have much control over in the spending of these, these funds. So that, that little insurance provision should help as long as we make sure that they've actually got a policy and put some reasonable limits in there that they can meet.
We, we had the planning commission report out earlier. Would you, would you care to share a general word about special experiments?
I sent up an email out to everybody with a little controversy that kind of erupted today with the local government attorneys in Virginia. And the Hornbook Rule, if you want to call it that, such as it is in Virginia, is that special use permits run with the land, and if you try to put a duration limit on it, I think you're cruising for a bruising. I don't think you can do that. You certainly can put limits on special use permits that relate to police powers, public health, safety, that sort of thing, noise, traffic, the whole gambit of concerns that the planning commission and the town council rightfully has. I just don't think that you can restrict the duration. That is the town council can't restrict the duration. Now, where some of the confusion comes in is in Virginia, there's a statute which gives boards of zoning appeals the power to restrict the duration of special use permits. And you have to realize that historically, in Virginia, special use permits used to be almost exclusively issued through boards of zoning appeals in counties. And as, as we've gotten into modern times, boards of supervisors and others have taken back that authority. And now you'll find that in, for example, the county of Almar, the board of supervisors essentially issue special use permits, except for certain limited exceptions in which the board of zoning appeals still does. But the board of zoning appeals has the power to put a duration clause on the special use permit. So that may be where the confusion is coming in. But I can assure you that there, there is a lot of confusion in the state of Virginia about that. And I sent Matt some, some of the comments of some of the people throughout the Commonwealth. And I think he saw that, that there's a lot of people in Virginia that think that town councils and counties do have the power to put a duration term on a special use permit. But I don't think they do for whatever that's worth. That's all I have. Does that help, Matt?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions to Mr. Bowling? Then we'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Thank you, Matt. Much of, much of the staff work in the past couple of weeks has been related to the committee meetings that have already been discussed. So I won't belabor those. We have had a pretty busy schedule of those, including some special meetings in multiple bodies, both past and upcoming. So I appreciate all of the volunteer help, the time put in by the committee members. We also had some continuing emergency operations. In, in addition to the pandemic operations, we had a hurricane impact a couple of weeks ago. One of the Greek named hurricanes, the 30th hurricane of this season, caused us to be pumping for about 24 hours. The fire department roster was excellent on that, and the equipment is working well. But it got Mr. Carr and volunteer Jack Maxwell and myself thinking a little bit more about public outreach. So let me bring it briefly to Jack, who helped us with some graphic design. And Mr. Maxwell, I'll share some pictures that you did.
Hey. So giving everyone, we're working on a better system for sending out alerts through the town limits of Scottsville. Instead of focusing on Savannah County, Buckham, and all those areas surrounding Almar County, we mostly have decided to focus, our main thing is downtown Scottsville and the town limits. We are currently working with Tim Carr, who's the flood control superintendent for town Scottsville. We are working on, I sent you guys some images about what the graphists will look like. So right now, we're making some changes to the evacuation alerts that I made. I did, I just discovered that, that nobody could see it. The background images were from, I guess, the 2018 in-town flooding that we had evacuate parts of East Maine. So right now, we're working on trying to get approved that by Tim Carr. And I guess the fire front has also have to prove that. So I mean, with them, November 15th, so this is the images you're looking at right now, is the evacuation one. The road closed one for flooding, I guess that'd be mostly for outside town. Then the, this one would be for the town flooding operations for the port landing. And this would be for the flood wall, which I couldn't find a good image of. And this one would be for the pumping operations for town Scottsville.
I think that's a, that's a really good point, that sometimes this is, it's a, it's critical infrastructure for the town, but it happens at such a routine level that sometimes the general public doesn't even know that it's happening. So I, I think raising awareness about these activities is probably worthwhile, and using the town's messaging tools and our volunteers a little bit more aggressively to, to share what we're doing and make sure the public is aware.
Because I don't think, I don't think Co-Red is doing what its purposes. I heard from other parts of Almar County that Co-Red doesn't do what job needs to be done. I know for me, where I live in, in Scottsville, I only get weather alerts and nothing else. And that's only when, it doesn't come only with like swift thunderstorm warnings, the only ones I get for the towns. So I think, I also signed up for Spotsboro County, which they do their own thing for Fredericksburg area. So I think we should invest in something that we can use for our town-owned alert system, and that we can put our, our energy into that and like make people be more weather awareness. And that with climate change, we're going to see more flooding issues, more hurricanes being more catastrophic like we have seen this year. Right now, let's put up the latest information for Wednesday's heavy rainfall forecast. Right now, it'd be a slow-moving cold front would be moving through the area with heavy rain and isolated instances of aerial and river flooding. So I'm thinking if this is, that'd be another instance, what happened a couple of weeks ago, we'd be pumping. So I sent out a message through Scottsville Breaking Weather to, and all that. Tim Carr would be now approving all posts for the flood, flood operations and pumping. I don't know, then Jeff would be in charge of the police public events postings. And I don't know what the town wants to do, anything else about. We also, we're going to do paragons. I know that people are like typical about paragons. So I'm going to try and work with Matt Grandstaff, chief of fire department, to see if we can post any of the emergency incidents. I know that there's HIPAA rule about that. So we're going to try and see what we can do to help get people to stay away from incidents. Like we have one up a road last Friday. And so we just want to make people aware what's happening around town Scottsville. So I hope this is a better thing for the town needs. I know that we've been tremendously helpful with the emergency management people does. And also this would be benefiting the town tremendously.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate all your hard work.
Yep, so we'll, we'll keep working with the fire department on that, and we'll get there. The, the next agenda item may have already been covered with the police report. Did you want to, did you want to work anymore on?
We talked about the police vehicle, and we talked about these new laws that have gone into effect. Unless anyone has something to add, those two items, I think we can skip on down to number 3B. So let's move down to number 3B on the new topics, town council vacancy.
It's, so we, we are, we are one short long call here this evening. And at last month's meeting, council put out the call for volunteer applications to serve the 18 months remaining on the expired term of gentaches. We have two applications in on those, so it's entirely up to council. What sort of procedure you'd like to run on that? We had one note right before the meeting requesting a special meeting on the subject. I believe that opened the discussion. Happy to support that, whether you need to.
Any thoughts?
What, what's the timeline that we have to follow for, for replacing someone on council? Like how soon, how soon or how long do we have?
Charter doesn't give timeline.
But we can do more business with a full team. So I'm proposing that we discuss these two interested parties at our meeting next Monday, and then we can make an appointment in December.
Would you like a closed session on that agenda?
Yes. I, I think we probably all know the parties, but if you would like to interview them, that's your choice.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the standard procedure, or at least over a number of years, has been that we have met face to face with them, or I guess you might say virtually, I think that would be a good idea.
Yes, that has been a standard. I confirmed that with government services last month, and that has been the standard approach to vacancies.
For purpose of scheduling, do you want to put that closed session at the end of next week or at the beginning? Or on a different day?
In the past, when I have participated, it's been six o'clock before a meeting. But I think, you know, whenever it works best for council members and the candidates that are interested would be best.
Well, I do not do six o'clock meetings, if I can help. So we can do it beforehand, it's going to be zoomed anyhow, more than likely. So let's just do it first thing on the agenda after our normal opening reports and discussions, and then we can shut off anybody that's not, shouldn't be in the meeting, because it definitely has to be, needs to be in a closed session. So that will give one more week for anybody to put their name in the hat.
I guess I'd be hesitant to do it after our public session next Monday, just because I feel like it's going to be a long public session. I feel like there are a lot of things on the docket, and I want to make sure we carefully consider these applicants, that we're not just all talking through it burnt out. I, I'd be amenable to, to a special session, just, you know, seven o'clock some other day, just to do this, and then maybe within a plan to appoint in December. Or make it part of our work session in December, I'd be happy doing that as well. Zach, I think that's a good idea, what you just said to do. Not that I would like to affirm other meetings, but I think, given the fact that we have two people, we've had a little bit of time, we either, I hear from our other fellow counselors, are we going to give it more time? Or are we going to move forward with what we have? I think moving forward with what we have is good, but I think the idea that Zach had to have a seven o'clock meeting another night is a great idea.
What's your pleasure?
I'd go for that, Dan.
When would you like to have a special meeting?
Do we want to do it in November? Because we can't appoint anyone until our December public session, correct? Yeah, okay.
You could, you could take action at a special meeting that starts to that purpose.
We could interview, we only have two applicants, we could interview them at a special meeting and appoint them after we've had our discussion.
Would, would it? Laura, you're extremely good at organizing and thinking, do you want to take a lead on just seeing what date we should do it?
So I'm looking at the calendar, we've got our public session on Monday, the 16th. So there's that, that fall, that week, right? So if you want to do Tuesday, the 17th, Wednesday, the 18th, Thursday, the 19th, or the next date I would advise is Monday, the 30th.
I was just going to say, ARB has a meeting on Thursday.
Okay, so that narrows it down to the 17th, 18th, or 30th?
I'd prefer a sooner, I'd prefer the week of the 16th, just because we know we've got the applicants in the docket, we're ready to go. I think, I think I'd rather keep it fresh in our minds.
Okay.
You're doing next Monday?
Monday's the little voice session.
Monday's our public meeting, so that's where we, we've got quite a full agenda. So we're looking at a special, either the 17th or the 18th.
Well, we'll do Wednesday.
18th, that work for all parties present?
That sounds great.
Wednesday, the 18th is it?
Thank you, everyone.
The same time as normal, 7:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
I'm blanking. Do, should we take, I'm sorry, the mayor is calling a special meeting for you. So let the, let the record show, the mayor is calling a special meeting at that time and place.
Okay.
You can do that.
All right, I did it. Anything else on the new topics, it's not on the agenda tonight.
I could just ask a question, has there been any progress made to ensure that Scottsville is included or will be included in the Almar County Emergency Operations Plan? in the Almo County Emergency Operations Plan?
Not that I know of. Maybe Matt knows something.
I've I've not heard anything on that specifically at the regional level. Most recently, I've been working with the county and regional staff on a flood control grant application. Um, so the the regional staff submitted that for us today. Um, and so the the routine partnership is a second, but I don't know the status of that plan update.
Okay, well, I know it's mandated by the state and, you know, Almo has to update. There is just like every locality does, so didn't want to be left out.
I will um, I will ask to call back to you about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up, Danny. Um, under carryover topics, CARES projects, and we have Bill Heisen, Bree Breland, and uh Susan Cable with us from Bread of Life. So if one of you want to be the spokesperson, come up here to the table and sit.
Thank you so much, Laura. Thank you so much for joining us. I do.
Y'all know Bill Heisen.
This is Bree Breland, one of the administrators with uh Bread Life. Thank you so much for joining us. I appreciate you taking the time here this evening.
We'll try to be pretty brief because the the PowerPoint lays it off really well. And Bree was spearheaded that with a number of people from our organization. But let me just first of all, say that um the Bread of Life is is only half of the food pantries in the Scottsville area. And they're both sponsored by the Bread of Life, uh the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. The Mobile Food Pantry was started in two thousand and ten uh uh is is a larger food pantry. But if this uh this one, the Mobile Food Pantry has no zip code requirement, no income requirement. And uh it serves a lot of people. The one we have more control of is the Bread of Life, which has been going on for twenty-five years. Uh, and this one, we um, there is a zip code requirement. It serves the rural poor uh and the food insecure. Uh, there is some regulations for income, and uh it it helps some of the disabled too. It's regulated. The uh, when we were approached to but to get the to get the the grant, we looked at many ideas. And uh, we thought about uh loca relocating or establishing uh uh the food pantry in different places. But uh, this one seemed to be the most beneficial and the best use of the money uh and a real win-win-win for the town. Uh, it helps the clients, it helps the businesses, and it helps the town and helps our pantry too. So we uh, the Bread of Life, we serve about seventy families, seventy, eighty families, and a hundred and forty people. And it's a supplemental relief program, so this will help a lot of the uh the people to, you know, get get other food. That they can't live on on the food that they're giving at the on the food pantries. So this whole idea was to give them some some extra food and resources during COVID and also during uh the winter. And uh, and also for Christmas or the holidays, as I said. So uh as you see from the so from that one, we are, we are uh we are not serving a lot of the people uh who need it. And part of part of our grant is to try to uh get more exposed about what's available for people in this area. So that that's pretty much all I have. Bree can kind of go over the statistics a little bit more.
Sure, well, I can just uh go over what what we're proposing and and um what we're saying is that we really do want to let folks know about the program. Um, one thing is that with COVID, the regulations change for um what's called TFAF. It's the Emergency Food Assistance Program. And the income level went up to a hundred and eighty-five percent of poverty. It used to be a hundred and fifty percent of poverty. So it makes more people eligible for this program. Not that everybody would want to take advantage of it, but these are trying times. And there's folks out there that if they could just have a little bit of supplemental food, even for a short period of time, it might help them get over the hump. Um, because the money has to be spent in a short period of time. Um, and as as Bill said, we wanted to also um work on local income as much as possible. Uh, what the group came up with was an idea that we would use the funding to um basically for gift certificates for food. So um, half of the funding would be used for gift cards at the food at at just at the Scottsville Food Line. And then half of the funding would be used for uh gift certificates to be used just at the local restaurants. All the money would be spent within the Scottsville area. Um, we would distribute these cards during the December um Bread of Life um session, which is the third Saturday of every month. And and as Bill mentioned, the folks are registered, they do have to meet the income eligibility to pick up the food at the Bread of Life. Um, and so we could, we have have a system worked out, and and it's pretty close right now, where we would distribute these gift cards and gift certificates. The other part of the funding would be used for letting folks know about the program, and that's where Susan comes in. She's uh working with the looking at marketing more, uh possibly doing mailers to uh all the families in the zip code area, which is about three thousand families.
Yeah.
And do banners, uh do some media spots, that that kind of thing. So the folks know that this program is here, that the it's it's more open than it used to be, um, and that we want to help. So our objectives overall are to increase uh the number of clients we serve by at least twenty percent. Uh, increase the volume of food available for needy families over the holidays in particular, and to increase spending at local restaurants and grocery stores um by ten thousand dollars respectively.
Before we go into any questions, Susan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm free. I'm just finally, we we launched this by uh December tenth, related.
That is a December tenth launch, and that that works out well in terms of the town's accounting timeframe. Our CARES money needs to be in the hands of community partners before the end of the calendar year, which is not to say that work can't continue into twenty twenty-one. And as um, as you said, you would you propose two program rounds, one before Christmas and one after. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll open it up to the council for any questions you have, Bill, Bree, or Susan. Something we can take care of next Monday at our regular meeting. Yes.
Yeah, I think uh I think this is a great idea. I mean, I um, yeah, I work with folks um to help them meet their basic needs at UVA and our contractors every day. And and food is something that um that we'll often skimp on in in order to be able to pay other bills. So uh, this is a a need, this is a a way, I think, to help a lot of different people um in a way that they can optimize for themselves. So any money that they save on food, they can then put toward, you know, whatever utility or or rent or mortgage that they might have. And I think it's a great idea to um, I love the way it involves the businesses as well, too. I think this is a brilliant idea.
Just out of curiosity for myself, how how do you ensure that the gift cards are going to the businesses? So how are how are you partnering with them?
So that's a great question. Um, what we're doing is we're actually buying Food Lion gift cards, debit cards. But they will be at the Food Lion, and we will be giving them a letter, giving the client a letter that they will take to the Food Lion, um use a picture ID so they can pick up their card. So that one is is given. The the point there is that it's the Food Lion preferred using a debit card. We didn't want to pre-purchase debit cards and not have them used. This way, we we know they're going to be used because they're being picked up. Uh, anything that's not used, that then we can get back. Uh, the gift certificates will have each restaurant, each establishment listed on the certificate. And um and the and the establishments know what to do with it. They'll collect collect the certificate and then uh basically invoice us or send the certificate back for reimbursement.
Let me just say that the the for the restaurants and other food establishments like Lucky's or whatever, they'll get five ten dollar certificates, and they have to use it all. They can't get change back.
Right.
Okay, yeah, it can't be used for tobacco, but.
Right, no tobacco and no alcohol, right.
Lottery ticket.
Okay.
So that's a good problem to have.
Yeah. One of my questions was in those exactly regarding those details. My other question is with marketing, will that marketing effort and plan extend past the holidays into the spring sema semester? Because your services continue regardless.
Right, okay, great.
And the hope will be that you'll get a a boost to your service roster.
Right.
Which will then continue.
Yes, okay, great, thank you.
And volunteers, yes.
Right, right. It's a it's a two-pronged effort, right, for those that want to help. That's good to hear, too. Great.
So in in trying to um align the proposals that we have, uh council has expected to appropriate fifty thousand dollars to close out the um CARES funding. And um, is that backwards on your screens? Um, this is, um, so we have the the options add up um in terms of, you know, continuing the um community center, telework, and virtual learning space um downstairs. Scan confirms that they can do that with um ten thousand dollars. Um, the uh the here group uh has orders for um PPE mask distribution into um Chamber of Commerce and all of the businesses in town. That lines up very well with what um Supervisor Price was describing. Uh, if we're if there's going to be a relaxation of occupancy limits, then the um hygiene, uh hand washing, ventilation, and mask wearing needs to be in good shape. So the um the here team wants to make sure that there is um plenty of hand sanitizer and masks out in the community. Um, and then we had an admin line of um five thousand dollars in here. Uh, that wasn't real specifically itemized, so if you wanted to turn that into a hazard pay um program, there's certainly space in that. Um, I would, I would not recommend uh taking money from Bread of Life to give myself a bonus. But it it was already programmed to have some admin expenses, and you could certainly do compensation with that.
I would second that sentiment. Question about the um, I don't have any more questions about Bread of Life, just sort of like balancing sort of like the money and where it goes now, because I think we have many sort of important things on my mind anyway, um and needs. Matt, a clarifying question about business grants like we did the last time. Because I know, you know, I'm really concerned about our businesses. Um, and I know the money has to be dispensed by December. So like, what's the if we put money on the table for businesses this time around, would they be able to apply and get money by the time the money had to be dispensed?
Um, so I, after the last meeting in October, I asked the um Community Investment Collaborative um sort of what their timeframe was for the end of the year. And um, they are under um a lot of administrative pressure right now and said that they couldn't take on a new program round before um before the holidays. Uh, it would be possible to contract with them, pay them in advance for small business grants that went out uh into the new year. Uh, so if you if you felt that a small business grant program for the dead of winter uh would be a priority into this list, that's doable, but they don't think that they can execute anything before Christmas.
Okay, but we could put money on the table for businesses, and it would be within the CARES Act to say we're gonna put this money aside for business grants, even though they're not gonna be paid out until January.
Yes.
The money would come out of our account and go to CIC before December thirty-first.
Got it.
CIC would not be able to conduct the work until sometime later.
That's right. That's the accounting that matters.
Thank you.
Other questions?
And I had a question just about at the administrative, both coming from your notes and also the comment you just made. Um, in the notes prior to tonight's meeting, there was, we had already allocated five thousand to the town, and there was another five thousand to potentially be added out of the second fund source. And wanted to just understand better what um that was to be used for, or if the needs had been clearly articulated.
Not for for the for the current funding, we've done um a little bit of marketing and office PPE kind of expenses, uh kind of a grab bag of smaller COVID-related items. Um, the main thing that I had expected to do with that, that I haven't, is um tally up administrative staff time for all things pandemic-related and um and claim that part of compensation back. It wouldn't be uh extra pay, but um displacing some of the personnel costs in our budget, if that makes sense.
Since we're not allowed to use the money to replace revenue, that would be an option of another way to to displace lost money in our budget.
Right.
That that I think I think that's actually a good idea.
But um but so so far, um to be to be clear, uh the town has not added any additional pay to staff related to the emergency. And so that that was something that the um chief of local pointed out. Other localities have done, we have not.
And then um in regards to the public outreach, five thousand again had already been allocated from the first um grouping. There's another five in the notes for tonight's meeting. You had mentioned that there was already ten thousand spent on PPE. Did I hear that correctly?
Right, that so that um that maxes out the current appropriation in public health and take some from the town operations and supplies.
Okay. So that's without a commitment of five from the next grouping of here's one.
That's right.
Care spending.
It would it would be um, it would be helpful to increase the public health outreach amount um to free that up. But if.
Okay.
Um, we thought it was important to get the um the mask shipment moving.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
I guess a question for my fellow counselors is, do we want to flesh out the dollar amounts tonight and then vote on them? I just want to get a sense for where the where the momentum's going here. Do it, because I I'm happy to talk through the dollar amounts. I think that that's an important thing to do if we want to get that lined up tonight, and then we can vote on it next Monday.
If we vote on it next Monday, would there be an opportunity for any pub public comments on it?
Yes, you've um you've called a public hearing uh on this matter for next week. And it um, it uh it has some placeholder amounts in it, which do include the nutrition and food bank support. Um, but if you if you learn something at your public hearing, which um impels you to change those numbers, you can certainly do that before an election.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, or anything else on this slide?
Yeah, I think we want to talk through the numbers a little more.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You know, for me, I'm looking at the proposal um that we shared last time from Bread of Life, and I feel like, and I think Laura mentioned this to like ten like the ten thousand dollar chunk related to gift cards, gift certificates seems like a good way for us to spend our money right now. Um, and then five thousand for the town, five thousand for here. I feel like that's kind of out there. And then that leaves, you know, um how's that leave? Do math, but thirty-five thousand, I guess. Um, and I just I just want to have as much money on the table as possible for our businesses. You know, I mean, we talked tonight about, you know, supporting outdoor dining as late as possible into the season. If they go indoors and need more PPE. I just feel like as long as there's money on the table for our businesses, which which drive this town, I I would like it to be available for them.
So one of the things I'm encouraged by is here is investing in supplies to give directly to the businesses. And then the Bread of Life presentation is investing directly to also support the businesses. So that gives me quite a lot of encouragement that through other avenues, we've discussed, there's investments coming through them back to the businesses. So something to just kind of keep in mind as we further discuss this evening. Um, the other thing that was put on the table surprisingly this evening was for the police bonus discussion. as well as recouping some of staff time. So I don't want to lose that. For me, food security and the businesses are my top interests in terms of CARES funding.
Yeah, that's where I am as well. And I think even more than supporting our remote learning station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is like going fine, but it's not getting nearly the traffic that I think warrants a ton of money for like one person in a day.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of investment. You max it 10 people a day, right? I mean, if you look at the cost, like you're spending $1,000 a person.
It's great service, don't you think?
It is, it is, yeah. Yeah.
And how much do we have? Is it 10,000 in that?
We've already invested 15. We're discussing another 10.
Right, so it's initially 10.
And that's, the idea is to extend it to April, May to help support school access. The schools have moved to phase three, so kindergarten through second or third grade is back in school. Some of the athletic groups are starting to regroup and some of the middle and high schools. And there's discussions by the school board of moving to the next phase.
If that's, if that's all the use we've had, that doesn't seem like a very good use of money at all.
Yeah, I agree.
Like, I think we should maybe just cancel it. Like, I'll just say that again, I'm not trying to sound like a Scrooge or something, but if it's not, there's so many different needs we have. If it's that low in success, it's easy to see there's many other places we could put the money.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I was a big supporter of it. I thought it was going to be much more successful than it was. But, you know, I can't, I can't be supporting it at the expense of businesses and food at this point.
It is a business. Just to argue on their behalf.
That is true. And, you know, I've supported them a lot historically, but it's a lot going. We've already put 15,000 into that business. So if we took that out, just to play devil's advocate.
Well, and let me look at the budget in terms of what their commitment is here.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. I couldn't understand you.
Well, if we did, if we gave them the 25,000 and then 5,000, I'm still separating the town, 5,000 for the town, 5,000 for HERE, 25,000 for Bread of Life, that takes up to 35,000 and we've still got 15,000 extra.
And that could go to business grants.
Yeah, that could go to business grants. I would be happy giving more to business grants, too. You know, it all went up, you know, everybody, it all went pretty quick the first time around and not everybody got to participate. And I guess for me, looking at the Bread of Life mock-up from last time, that the 10,000 for the gift card seems to be the biggest chunk.
It's 10,000 over two different times.
20,000 total.
20,000 total and then 5,000 for marketing.
For marketing, okay.
I see, okay.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So 10,000 in December, 10,000 in February, and then 5,000 for marketing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We don't have a marketing budget. We don't broadcast too much except by word of mouth. We've had, in the past, we've had, you know, articles in the Rural Virginian and the Scottsville Monthly. But, and then, of course, we broadcast it with the churches. But, and it's word of mouth with the people who want to sign up for it.
Do you get referrals from social services?
Yes, yes. We get referrals, yeah. And we do a lot of deliveries, too. And we initially thought we would use some of the money to provide transportation for the, some people, you know, deliver out to like Carter's Bridge, but we decided not to use it for transportation.
I find it hard, you know, to spend $5,000 to give something away for free.
Describe the match component, that wasn't clear.
So.
The $5,000 for the.
The gift certificates require a match, don't they?
No, no. I think he's asking about the $5,000 for marketing. That's a good question, though. You want to explain it or you want to do that? She's the marketing expert here. Got all kinds of positions.
Okay, we're talking about, and again, this would be a program that hopefully would extend beyond. So a banner for over the bridge, a banner for at the community center where the food is actually given out that's there on the days that there is delivery. If we send postcards to everybody, the 3,657 people in the Scottsville 2579, 24590 zip code, there is printing for the postcards. We're hoping to put together a package, a design package that would work for the postcards, for flyers that would be put out around town, postcards to be sent. And also, obviously, we'll do press releases, hoping to get some PSAs on local radio stations. And that's, and also getting a single number telephone that would carry over for the program. So there's a single, currently, we're using Bill's telephone number or Al's, Al Quist's telephone number. So to have a centralized telephone number that could possibly be a virtual phone, which I'm researching, that could be keyed into somebody else to pick it up as the calls come in. So, and that would be a long-term thing for the program. Well, because. Because we're only serving, right, because we're only serving 80 families. I'm sorry.
Not necessarily, but we want everyone who's eligible to know about the program. There's roughly 2,500 people in the Scottsville zip code who are under 185% of poverty.
And they're not showing up, so you want to try to reach them.
Right.
But we don't know who they are.
Correct.
So this is get to know your neighbors. Did you know what the level of poverty is in Scottsville, which I think will come as a shock to some people.
The 100, I had to look it up. The 185% threshold is a single person making $23,600 or a family of four making $48,400. So it's maybe 185% federal poverty is a higher number than perhaps people thought it was. And it includes maybe more families than thought they were eligible for help.
So, yeah, poverty level's 26,000 for a family of four, 185 is 48,000. So it is higher. And that's the point that folks who are struggling may not realize that they're eligible to these programs.
Previously, they weren't.
Correct, correct.
So the money is going to be used to promote the gift cards and gift certificates in the short term, but expand your outreach in the long term.
Right, right. And I think the greater emphasis is on expanding the program long-term and making more people aware of it and people who really need it, that they can come into the program.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on any of the areas that we've discussed?
I'm playing around with numbers based on discussions and just how much are we thinking we want to offer to businesses in the winter months?
I mean, it's hard to put a price tag on it because I just don't know what their need is going to be. You know, the grants went out at like 3,000 and 5,000 clumps, I heard.
Right.
So if it's only, so if it's, you know, just by what we've got here, if it's 15,000 left over for business grants, we're talking five $3,000 grants.
Which is not a lot.
No, but it could be, you know, the heat bill or.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, that's not a lot. Number of grants is not many.
And it's, it feels a little, I'm sorry, the economic situation feels so uncertain that maybe come February, that's the difference between a business staying open versus failing. But we don't know that. And so it's hard to make a decision now for what do we think the world is going to look like in March. But maybe if you create an open partnership with an agency like CIC or the County Economic Development Authority and put that placeholder there, maybe that gives you some flexibility.
Flexibility, yeah.
For not knowing how things go, that just, that becomes a difficult contract to write. We don't know what we're asking for.
So here's my thoughts at the moment. So I guess, you know, a motion per se, and that is, what I currently have drafted is 10,000 for businesses, thinking more like five $2,000 grants. 22,500 for the Bread of Life. So cutting the marketing budget with a commitment to helping you market through some non-expensive means, like connecting you to schools where you can reach, you know, targeted families, helping with maybe some flyer promotion, helping with, you know, creating banners that maybe aren't quite as costly. So you can create, you know, two reusable banners on an ongoing basis, things of that nature. 5,000 for SCAN, just so they're not cut short unexpectedly, so at least they can close out with some dignity and respect. 5,000 for HERE to continue the initiative that's already started. And then there's 7,500 for town police combined to allocate as appropriate based on those expenses. Because to me, they're both under the town budgets. I'm not quite sure whether they would be individual items.
Laura, just, this is Dan. I agree with what you said, but I think I would cut Bread of Life another 2,500 and I would increase the business grants in that category. But I like everything else that you did. I think, nothing against Bread of Life, but I do think Zach's point of trying to maximize what we can do for businesses, but I like all the other numbers you have.
Was that just a flat rate for the businesses, Laura, 2,000, 2,000, 2,000, or was it based upon losses or needs?
It's, I have, again, you know, I don't know who's good, we know somebody's going to need, right? We know there's businesses that are going to need. We don't know who they are. So I was just, I was trying to come up with a number that kind of worked for everybody, but cut everybody just a little bit at the same time, based on the priorities and discussions.
So it may not end up that way, but, you know, that's just the way it is right now.
Yes, correct. Make a motion next Monday. It sounds good.
Can we at least use HERE, maybe Laura, with Dan's feedback, just have that be the thing we talk about next Monday? I think that would, I'd be satisfied with that. I don't think I'm going to kick around.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah, that sounds a good way.
That's a great starting point. Again, you know, for those of you that presented from Bread of Life, we want to be helpful to achieving the marketing goals, too. So, you know, speaking from events and the tourism committee, I think there are some ways that we might be able to partner to reach those goals.
We appreciate that.
Certainly. Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you all, Stan. Stay healthy.
Okay, we have a little bit more committee work on this topic. Government Services has taken it on and will have a little bit more to report next month. But we had a committee meeting on that topic a couple of weeks ago and it's coming together. The presentation to the Board of Supervisors was helpful and you heard from Supervisor Price, they are pulling their recommendations together now. So I'll follow up with the county staff, see what's teeing up for them and where we might connect on it. The most notable one, of course, is the police vehicles presentation that you heard at the top of the agenda. That becomes a little bit more urgent just based on what happened last week. One vehicle lost and another damaged. And the proposal to purchase a used vehicle, that does seem to present a good value for what it is, but it's a different kind of procurement from what we typically do. We've used the USDA grants and loans to good effect in the past. But just to say that the police vehicles replacement may be moving up higher in that priority list. So we're still adjusting that. But there's no decisive action on any other capital projects in the past couple of weeks. The last thing that you heard was the Commonwealth Transportation Board approval of our sidewalk project. They have not sent me anything as far as contract details or follow-up on that one. It's not moving quickly at all, so the town still has opportunity to set our CIP and decide our funding levels. So we're not going to be caught flat-footed with the dot.
Of course, I have a couple of questions. For the capital improvement plan, a couple of things that I wanted to get a follow-up on. We have CIX grant commitments and want to continue to pursue that on an annual basis. But that project being launched is critical to asking for a replenishment of those funds. So that's something I wanted to update on. Also, on the farmers' market bird netting, I know we discussed this at our last meeting, but just want to be sure that that's scheduled to take place. Canal Basin Square needs some boat maintenance and shade. So again, these are more immediate capital improvements, but it would be helpful with the Government Services Committee tomorrow to know what's taking place under normal maintenance and what I need to address within the committee meeting tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. I have those.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, I attended the Scenic River 50th Anniversary event today. And I feel like under normal times, it would have happened later in the evening with more wine. So I'm hoping that the next time I go, it's a little more fun. So I tried while I was there to learn something. And what I learned is that our little bit of Horseshoe Bend here is pretty unique in Virginia. And not only just because we like it, it's very beautiful, but it's part of only 2% of rivers, river miles in Virginia that have this designation, which is pretty cool. And the program came into effect the same year as Earth Day and the Clean Air Act and some other things in 1970. I was trying to figure out how this program helps localities. Because they designate a river and we know that it prevents, like, you can't build a dam on the Horseshoe Bend now without, like, you just can't. They don't have much power, thanks for laughing, Eddie, but I don't know how much power is going to come out of that thing anyway. But they don't do anything in terms of exert any additional authority over private property owners or they don't change land use. So I was trying to distill from them like what they do to help localities that are interested like us in improving their scenic, right? How do you improve your scenic water front of your scenic river? And so I think there's more work to be done there. And I think what we might want to do is that as we move forward with thinking about the public boat launch, the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, is maybe just like. the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, is maybe just like loop them in with those communications. I don't know where we are with moving forward on that stuff. But I, but I think as we do, we should just make it a point of communicating with them or bringing them into that conversation. So, but wanted to share that with all of you. And it was a nice, it was a nice presentation. Got to see a lot of pictures of really pretty rivers in Virginia. So that was.
Thank, thank everybody for their participation this evening. And I will use my executive power and adjourn this meeting.
Thank you all.
All right, take care, y'all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for tuning into this regular work session of the Scottsville Town Council. The time here locally is 8:59 PM. If you're tuning in in the future, thank you very much. And check out other public meetings available on Town and Scottsville YouTube.